Good evening. It is 7:27 and an app call the East Lime Zoning Commission meeting of July 7th, 2002 to order. Let's rise for pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Application. Excuse me. Attendance. Myself, I am here. Mr. Peck. Mr. Granitek is here. Ms. Thurlow is here. Mr. Dwyer is here. Ms. Jett Harris is here. Mr. Schmidt is here. Ms. Markovitz is here. Mr. Maholland. Mrs. Hardy. Sue. The only one we are missing tonight is Mr. Ginsberg. Moving on from there. Public delegations. Is the time set aside for the public to address the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda? Do we have any set items? No. Moving on to public hearing number one. I believe we have to... Excuse Mr. Peck. Correct? And I would like to seat Ms. Markovitz for that. For the application of Nicole Naidoo for a special permit for a dance studio indoor recreation at 11 Freedom Way, Unit D2, Niantic, Connecticut. At this time. You may, Mr. Maholland.
This is a special permit application under section 11.2.24, special permit for indoor recreation in a light industrial zone. Businesses existing in this state zone and it's relocated to the light industrial zone for business reasons. The site is existing. The building is relatively new, maybe 15 years old, so it's still compliant with our site requirements. It is a multi-use building. There are several businesses in it which will be... The property will be addressed in the presentation. There are 15... There are 78 parking spaces in one of those buildings under those regulations. There are 78 now, however. Many of these things are parking in front of garage doors that are on the building in some instances. When we start counting up the miscellaneous parking spaces, we get around 107. Her prime time is going to be, I think it's 3:00, 3:30 to 8 o'clock. And so there's going to be some overlap with very minors over prime time for the dance studio. We have that time. Two hours, I think, I guess, 3:30 to 8 o'clock. And I think the applicant can throw the comment on that. I believe this adequate parking in the southern zone compliant. However, my lady will...
Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
All right.
Like to...
Good evening.
Introduce your name, state your name, please.
Sure. Nicole Naidoo. I currently own 5678 Dance. And I plan to continue owning it. I just need to relocate. So the location in question will be used as a deat studio. The hours of operation will be approximately 3:30 to 8, Monday through Friday. The average class size is 10 students. Out of the 25 classes a week that I teach, only seven have parents that even stay. Most classes are drop and go due to COVID and things. I've been in business for 13 years. 11 of those have been here in Niantic. Due to a severe rent increase, I am looking for a more affordable option. Any larger gatherings that we have, rehearsals, parties, et cetera, will be on weekends when the other businesses are closed. So, in Building A, there's an office and a wheelchair manufacturer. B has a computer company, storage, screen printer, and a warehouse. And then D, the one that I am looking at, has a machine shop. Numbers three and four are a contractor who is only there part-time. And five and six is a manufacturer, also only there part-time.
You are taking 1,000 square feet as a unit?
Yes.
1,500 to 1,000 square feet is the size of your unit, which is the size of most of the units
There.
in this development. So it's more of a startup type of property where most of it's 1,000 square feet. As I should point out, some of the other uses are daytime uses mostly. And some are storage, which really don't have, you know, occasional use. So it appears that it should be not problematic for the interaction of our students, our business, and perpetuation of your bond of motion parking.
Ms. Naidoo, what is your downtime in terms of swapping locations? I know you guys...
So, I am in my current location until the end of August. But I plan to start, I'm hoping to start in this location in September.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
I'm just curious. Indoor recreation, what does it include? Is it tap jazz ballet or...?
It is all of the above. Contemporary...
Hip-hop?
And hip-hop.
Yay, okay.
Yes, with only appropriate music.
Your parking is like wave parking. Come in, load of cars, and out.
Yes. Yep.
Any potential issues with noise within your space adjacent to others?
I don't think so. In my, all of my years, I've never had a music complaint. So I don't feel, because I keep it low. It's a lot of children. So...
And no, I mean, I don't know what the flooring type is that may cause potential issues with dancing and, you know, not, I'm not saying just music, but also, you know, noise generated from
Absolutely.
the activities within the building. I know that you said most of these are off-hour businesses. You said there was one office?
Yep, there's an office and a machine shop. It's like a contractor and a machine shop.
And what proximity is the office to the...?
The office is at the other end.
Okay.
Yes. And I have a floating floor, so it's padded, so it does not make as much noise.
All right, that's all I have.
We got a previously approved jazz-sized dance class out there in one of the buildings. They did open their garage door, and I did hear from the condo folks up...
I will not do that.
We haven't heard from anybody within any of the developments. And I'm going to assume acoustically you're going to keep that a level where you can instruct.
Absolutely.
They don't have to shout over the music.
Okay.
And Mr. Mah... You don't think the parking will impede parking for the tenants that are already there?
I don't. It is on the surface, and I asked for a layout, and I have a plan here if anybody wants to take that. I'm like previously... Circulation is very good. And again, 10, 12 students is not a lot of action.
And there's 107 spaces.
Approximately, including the miscellaneous, there's some of them unofficial, but the capacity is there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I'm quite satisfied.
With that being said, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Do I have a second? Mr. Granitek?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to regular meeting. Please note that Ms. Denise has remained seating for Mr. Peck.
Hey, no kissing here.
For the application of Nicole Naidoo for a special permit for a dance studio slash indoor recreation at 11 Freedom Way, Unit D2, Niantic, Connecticut. Mr. Maholland, do you want to add anything to this or...?
I don't think I need any conditions, in my view. I think we've covered everything. The acoustic questions were very good, even a little bit out by jurisdiction. But then again, if you've got a user, that may be adversely affected. We should know that in the decision making the question is asked. And I think it was a very good point. You know, we have more traffic in the condos than we do the industrial uses. We have affordable housing on top of the hill.
It's actually easier to get in and out of here than it is at Midway Mall as well. Nothing against Midway Mall whatsoever, but just saying. Anybody got any questions?
Nope. There's a church up there that has a whole lot more parking than she'll have to worry about, so I see no problem with it whatsoever.
You good, Terry?
I'm good.
Myself, I'm fine. And good? With that being said, I would take a motion to approve or deny?
I move to approve the application of Nicole Naidoo for a special permit for a dance studio indoor recreation at 11 Freedom Way, Unit D2, Niantic, Connecticut.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jett Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That being said, Mr. Peck, would you like to join us again, please? Thank you, Denise.
Every blessing got to get into the act.
Absolutely. We all need to take classes, Bill. Let's go take dancing classes.
Yes, I offer adult jazz and tap.
You don't do the salsa, do you? Like the fiery salsa, avocados?
Actually took it for years.
Being a little humor there. You'll figure it out in a minute.
Actually took tap jazz and ballet for 15 years when I was a kid, so... I think it's great. I think it's a wonderful idea and great for the community and for the kids.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been here quite a while.
Yeah, good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats. Okay, moving on. I take approval of the minutes of June 16th, 2022. Anyone?
Want me to read it?
Just leave a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve.
I make a motion to... I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I didn't know if he was still reading them.
Oh, I thought I...
Are you good?
So I don't know if I'm supposed to do something with that.
I do have a motion from Mr. Peck to approve the minutes of...
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. Old business, there is none. New business. Application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for a special permit for a landscape service company per Section 8.2.1 and Section 25.5 at 23 Black Point Road. East Lime Assessors map, 11.4, lots 172-1, 173 partial. Mr. Maholland, you'll schedule that, please?
I will, thank you.
Any business on the floor, if the majority of the voted commission? Anyone? Moving on. Zoning official.
I really don't have anything. We're very steady. There's some work in the wings. The new building downtown is going quickly. I've got a... We've got a new business going on Boston Post Road in a new building on the first floor.
That's looking good.
Is that the one next to East Line Pizza? That one, you mean?
Yeah, they're starting to come together. The back specialists, so it'd be a lot of medical dependent use. You know, where the state continues to be difficult with, we've been asking to mow and clean up, and they just kind of don't want to hear it. Part of their why, and they want to take the trees in front of Stop &amp; Shop. I've been arguing with them. And I might get anywhere near a feathered road down to almost zero just at the intersection of Industrial Park and Land cottage Road. Well, they want to smoosh up Mr. Brook. He treats it 25, 20 years old. If you're going to take them out, why don't you be more cooperative with the community? Our engineering book number 9968 in Section 10 says no. So I've got nowhere within, and I've tried four or five times. And I think the road's going pretty bad. We would like them to give us a swap on the road, get some canes beat up. I'm going to Plan B where the owner of the property may allow me to take a few parking spaces up along the road and put trees there. And get them in out of our road a bit. I'll be a little inside, but we'll be able to get them and at least get some canes. By the way, that's sort of the negotiation and the same discussion, but I think I can pull that out. How will it look? I'm not sure yet. If the state doesn't acquiesce, then I don't think I can move. And then, you know, there's rumors all over about all kinds of developments right now. My opinion, and rumors because that I walked through my door. That's all there are. So we sold John. That's pretty much what I have.
Can I ask you? Would that approve for the extra parking, you said? One owner was going to give somebody else the rights to, for parking? What'd you just say?
And I'm...
For trees.
...the existing Stop &amp; Shop and the trees, and
Yeah.
we have some excess parking spaces that I could use along the sidewalk just beyond it.
Is that going to be in writing?
Oh, all of that will be...
Oh, okay, that's what I was concerned about.
...discussed. I'm talking to their attorney.
Right.
And of course, the same developer owns it that developed it years ago, so I've interacted with it over the years. But this is something we'd like to have for the streetscape, otherwise it's kind of pretty, you know, pretty raw out there. And you need vegetation and you need landscaping to soften, you know, those broad roads that are just miracle miles. Trees do a lot, and that's giving up a lot. So that's kind of what's going on. The car wash has closed and a new owner has bought, he's going to demo the building. I think I shared that with you. And they're going to put up a new one, which is starting to get the plan. While I'm waiting on the site plan, I did get them to mow the property because they haven't been mowed for a while, so at least got them cleaned up. I have a...
Did you notice that Leos and Leoettes, or is it just Leos, have been having car washes at Liberty Bank every weekend? Yeah.
The I-Grass Place across from Stop &amp; Shop, they're almost ready to open.
That's the old Mr. Pease?
Yeah, I haven't already. They've been working pretty hard in there, and they were in there over the weekend. So that's coming along. We've got some new businesses coming to the community.
Do we have an update on the old Niantic motel? Up in the hill?
The teardown or they cross the street?
Across the street, up in the hill.
Oh, yes.
They're crawling.
Yeah, they're crawling for a variety of reasons. How shall I say? Apparently, there were some issues with our previous building official that were problematic. And there was, I apparently left the discussion down going, I think that may be past us, and we are now understanding is going to be getting in and get to work. And that area is looking a little downtrodden lately. But if the state gets going. And they were supposed to start around July 1st, so for the state, you know, the state could be in August first. But they're poised to get in.
Has, sorry, you done?
I'm just frustrated with that whole intersection.
Welcome to the...
Yeah, that's the postcard for East Lime now, for summer traffic.
Listen, in summertime, we're the gateway to southeast of Connecticut. This is what they do to us.
That's where you go to start, come off the highway.
You do.
Yep.
Speaking of that general area there, is Starbucks going to get rid of that entrance there, or are they waiting for the construction of the road there?
Well, oddly enough, I met with the manager today because somebody took their stop sign down when you exit the property. And somebody contacted me. They're concerned about somebody might have hurt us out there on that, and then she brought up that very entrance. And she wants to change the sign because it's ugly, so her son, who's in the world, we're obvious to the proposal. She said, but ideally, we should just continue the landscaping and fence and close it up permanently. Well, there we see, they don't own it.
Ah.
The owner doesn't want to do that. And then Starbucks doesn't want to pay for it.
Any particular reason the owner doesn't want to do that?
I think he's anticipating another user at some point with a drive-through. And the question is, who pays to be approved? That's always the issue when you're not at least...
Because that originally was denied from the zoning commission at the time, and they won the appeal?
Yes. Well, actually, what happened is it was denied by the zoning commission, the only group did as a parking, drive-in, walk-in. They went to the zoning board of appeals who gave them a variance for the drive-through, and we were shocked because there's no legal hardship and nobody challenged it. And so therefore, it was installed, and now the fears of the zoning commission have come true in terms of it's not an appropriate spot for a drive-through, and it wasn't designed for it, so that's why you see all the commotion all the time. It's just that, I think, in my opinion, the...
So, in reference to what you were asking, if you agree, maybe you can turn it back.
But you turned it down. They appealed it three times. Third time, they won the appeal. Came to the zoning board, and the zoning board did approve it.
Yes, but GBA approved the drive-through, not a variance.
Right.
Yeah. So there's a long history. This board's paid attention to all those kind of things over the years. Some of you obviously weren't here, so you don't know the history, but when you hear it, you're like, oh, okay, fine. So that's how we got to this point. Practically speaking, the state's going to do with taking you from the stop of the Starbucks, I don't know how much, I think it's only three or four feet. So we're going to have a little adjustment there, and that might be an opportunity to say, hey, we've got to close it up. I'm going to contact the owner just to have a discussion.
Three or four feet might have a significant impact.
That's right.
It does.
And that might be catalyst.
That it does, for those of you who drive all the time.
It's already in my, I can hear it when the opportunity does come up. So, state's going on, and, you know, it's going to be a long haul. They're telling me three years. You know, maybe it'll be two, but, you know, those contractors seem to say, you know, they got three-day takeout.
Three and a half.
And, you know, so we move along.
I have a question. Is there, am I allowed to ask for an update for the, for those... I refer to it as a SIFT building, but that's not what it is, but the old, is there, is there an update that we can...?
Well, yeah, I mean, practically speaking, most of what they're doing is building code right now. They're building it up. They've had as many as 50 people on the job. They're moving very quickly. The upper floors are, the up top floor, I guess, is, I think they're just getting ready to sheetrock up there. On the commercial side, this is the one go. I've got someone else that I'm dealing with. We're trying to figure out if, and they're trying to figure out if they're a restaurant or they're retail prepackaged, retail distributor of prepackaged foods, which would be more aligned with the grocery operation. They could do that, so I'm waiting on that.
Like a galloping gourmet or something?
Yeah, and yes, and so we're kind of going back and forth because it might affect the parking, so I've had a look at that as we look at these uses. That two store comes to the other two, I think, are unknown at this time. And then I do have a new fish market coming in that's going to go, and I think he closed the deal. I've approved him because it's a, it's an initiative approval. It's going to go in the yellow building on Methods and Oak Street on the corner. They're going to take the first floor.
Methods, no.
Yeah, and on the first floor, it's apartment above, and they sell fish and, as I was going through the project, like fishermen. So they'll be in, you know, first thing I, my first inquiry was, well, what about owners? And he addressed that. All anyways is frozen, and everything else is fresh. So if it's frozen and they toss it away, they take it away frozen, we're good.
Someone said Azalea was moving down to the new building, or SIFTed.
They may be owners that we can...
Who is, I'm sorry?
But I mean, it's...
It's next to the fence.
Any update on the fence with Amtrak?
I understand is that, that they're going to be putting in blockchain link.
From what I read is that they're going to hold off on a decision for now, and they're going to try to come up with some other design for the village aspect of it. So right now, they put it off.
Is that Amtrak, or so that's...?
That is Amtrak, yeah.
Interesting.
Yep. I read that. And just for the record, Ms. Jett Harris, it is the Norton is the SIFT building.
Yeah, it's a dozen liters on 185-inch feet, et cetera, et cetera. The, if anybody's interested, and I may have already told you at some previous meetings, the architecturally approved fence at Amtrak is putting up in most places. It's up in Nolan. It's found in the shipyard of Loxton. See, we should have since spices marina right across the way, where the Amtrak rail line runs right in, so it's been up in...
I have checked, I mean, I...
Everybody has a different...
Yeah. I like it, but anybody is what it is. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Mrs. Hardy?
Well, all this is recorded, so I can say to the staff to stand up. Sorry, I'm limping over tonight.
That's okay.
It's because I have discovered when I, after I got dressed this morning, that I had two different shoes on. I haven't been home since...
They look close.
We would have noticed if you didn't say anything.
These things happen, you know. So, as a follow-up to the previous discussion about the car wash, the towns also received numerous complaints about the buildup of trash out in the back. And there, there's a degree that's supposed to be taken care of and hauled off. Last night, the board heard from about, I would say, 25 to 30 local residents about the coyote situation in town. Along with an increased presence of bobcats and...
Bears.
But I think we, several people had called in advance to say that they were coming to speak at the beginning of the meeting. And so we had advance notice, and we had the local animal control officers there. And it was very interesting because they cannot deal with wildlife. They can only deal with domestic animals.
Oh, yeah.
So the state must come in and deal with that, and this is a statewide problem, but they don't have a statewide solution yet as to what to do. So there were some suggestions given as to things that residents could do in the meantime to try to protect themselves and their pets. And I noticed that several people last night were wearing waist belts that had little pockets in them to show how they go out walking with air horns to warn that if they see something approaching, to try to scare them away. But it really has become a major problem. And I think particularly for zoning and applications that come before you, this is going to continue to be a problem as we have more and more development, and there's fewer and fewer places for the animals to go. You can't trap them because there's no place to put them. You can't put them on state property. You can't take them to the state forest and release them. So the question is, what to do? And there's barely a person that you can talk to that hasn't seen them. So after hearing this from 30, about 30 people last night, I leave, and now I'm really cautious. I make sure that I click my button, make my car lights, headlights go on before I go out to get in the car. I'm driving up Main Street and nearly run over a coyote that's at the top of the hill, crossing the street. And there are people out on the sidewalk still. They're local tourists. They're out at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. They're walking. And here they are up at the ice cream place, and the coyote runs right behind it. There's people there. They've still got little kids with them, and they're totally unaware. So I think one of the things that the Board of Suckman can do, but I don't know if we actually need zoning approval to post signs around town so that people who are just in town for the day, coming to the beaches, to the parks, you know, stayed a couple nights, can we put up signs that warn them that there are coyotes in the area and to be aware and to watch their pets?
The zoning guide will rule that those are called municipal signs under Section 18, informational signs put out by the government will be fine.
All right.
We'll figure out how, I'll need to see the size and shape, and we'll figure out if that's something I can improve. And there's a, there's a section of code that allows it for those kind of places. And so we believe we can do that. And just to add, I did see that coyote this morning at 10 o'clock, walking down the center line of Hope Street, right in front of the condos, with something hanging and dangling out of its mouth.
Wasn't Ant's dog.
And several people watching it stopping, it was an animal of some kind. And then he darted in behind the Methodist Street condos. But he's right downtown, size of a small German shepherd.
Oh, they're up at CVS like at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Their den is over there by the railroad tracks. One of my neighbors followed it, and its den is over in that direction, so pretty soon it's going to have babies, you know. They're, they're, babies are newborn.
There's a den by my house, and they had six pups.
Yep.
Well, I guess there's something cooking across from Black Point Pizza. We've got that.
And what's good...
There's something built down here that's become overgrown, but it only doesn't blow it.
What's good to know is, is that they, they don't mate in the same place every year. They, so hopefully next year, they won't be as much of a, they are a problem right now.
Well, I would doubt it because Niantic's a pretty nice place. I'm sure they're enjoying living in town.
Mrs. Hardy, can I ask you this? Is it something to where the town could put information on our website to basically state that, you know, like, these animals most likely will not hurt you unless they're provoked? You know, because this is actually one of these touchy subjects to where, you know, you're going to have both sides say, well, you know, I want to destroy them, or, you know, I want to protect them. So if we can get information out there to say, look, basically, they will not bother you unless they're provoked, right?
Most of the time, but they do. We have incidences where they have, so you never know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we get the information out there.
At least from people, particularly who are in town temporarily and unfamiliar with the circumstances, but I don't know that they would necessarily go to the website, but who knows?
There was a Facebook post a couple weeks back that was put out by the town. An informational bulletin.
Because if we put signs up, the business owners might feel like, you know, that it'll drive, you know, tourists out. They'll be like...
Well, we were thinking about perhaps along the boardwalk where people would be walking and likely walking pets and things. But unfortunately, it's now not just at nighttime, and it's not just at dusk.
No, but...
For the example, not to go on about it, but when I did it today, about 15 yards... about 15 yards was a man in a motorized wheelchair, handicap, defenseless. Couldn't get out of the chair. The coyote was literally 20, 30 feet away. But, you know, it was dangerous.
So I'm not sure whether it would be the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen or the following meeting, but we will be having state DEP enforcers coming down to talk with the town about some measures and suggestions that we might take. But the real quandary is, if you set traps, you're likely to get some other animal that you don't want to be trapped. And if you trap the animal, what are you going to do with it? It's illegal to take it and dump it anyplace.
I mean, if there's a natural deterrent, like, you know, with some birds, you could put like a fake owl there. Is there something that they're afraid of that they would...
It doesn't appear to me that we're afraid of them. They could care less about us.
We're the apex predator for them, and there's them, and that's about it.
I think they're coming on the 28th, July 28th. I think so.
They are, July 28th, that's when they're having...
So that should be informative. We're getting a lot of requests to develop pickleball courts, particularly from many of the senior residents in town because this is an activity that is something that they are able to participate in very comfortably. Again, there's no instant solution to this. We do have the tennis courts at the high school that can be used off-season or off-practice time. And we have the senior center, but that's indoor. There's no space outdoors. So there's a lot of interest in this. They're... This group is going before several boards and commissions to say that this is really something that senior residents in particular would like to see developed. So we do have some pieces of town property that are not developed at this time. But again, to develop a field, it's not just a matter of going out and drawing some lines. There's significant cost for that. So that's something that's on the horizon. And we approved several capital improvement items last night. I think of interest to this board and in previous discussion about traffic and traffic solutions, we received a $25,000 grant to study Route 161 and what to do about the so-called the corridor to and from town. It's not to do anything. It's just to study it, $25,000. But it was a grant. So hopefully, there'll be some ideas, and I'm sure that they will be wanting some input from Mr. Mulholland, hopefully, and then to the board as well. And other than that, most of the items were final approval of things that had already been approved previously, and this was the last round to go before a town meeting. And then come back to the selectmen. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Oh, one other thing, there's been a lot of interest in the Hathaway property and the possibility of the town purchasing that. And we are still gathering information on this from various sources. We're getting... We're not getting all of the information that we need in order to make a good decision as to whether this would be a good investment for the town. It does involve, it does include some wetlands, some other positive features, but unfortunately, there's no roadway into the area, into that area. So it's not just a matter of purchasing the property. If you want to be able to utilize the property, then, you know, there's no parking. There's no roadway into it, so...
Make it a coyote farm.
Probably the neighbors wouldn't appreciate that. So, anything else?
Congratulations on Elvis night.
I wanted to ask you, did you organize that, Roseanne? Because I heard that you did it, and it was fabulous.
It was.
Thank you.
Did you organize it?
I gave some suggestions.
Well, I... It was really wonderful. Like, a lot of my neighbors, they absolutely loved it. And they just... That was just a really great thing, so...
I was all shook up.
I know the feeling.
I have a comment about the pickleball. Just something to consider, just kind of off the cuff. But in Pine Grove, we have a basketball court. And the pickleball net, we use it in the summertime. This is the second year. It's very big in my neighborhood. So you can buy a portable one, and they work very well. They're $115. And ours has made it two years with tons of kids, adults. And we have pickleball hour for adults and pickleball time for the kids and stuff. And we have a bin, and they keep the things there. So if you have a court, the pickleball net is $115 from Amazon, so... And it's held up very nicely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will say that, you know, once in a while, an idea just pops into your head. And I happen to be an Elvis fan, so I said, "Let's go for it and get some excitement in downtown."
It was great.
But...
Did Elvis make it home? I was just curious.
I can't say enough about Elvis.
For those of you who understand what I mean, yeah.
But I think the positive thing was that it was so upbeat, and there was so much enthusiasm downtown, a lot of people downtown, stacking around. I didn't win the costume contest, but that's okay.
But you looked great.
But I hope that we can do some additional things like this from time to time. Elvis informed us that Ms. Priscilla, otherwise known as Ms. P, does... Oh, my gosh, now her name went out of my mind. Yes, thank you, that she does Passy Klein. So they really like Niantic, in spite of the fact that the Cadillac convertible that was supposed to pick them up broke down.
Thank goodness for Mr. Pete Powers, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so they would like to come, they would like to be invited back to do a country western night. So get your boots ready. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Carrying on, comments from the zoning board liaise on the planning. We had last time. Next up is Mr. Peck on the 12th. Comments from the chairman, myself. Hopefully, we'll have a good summer. Fireworks coming up this weekend. We got the Sale Fest. Followed by next weekend is Celebrate East Lime, St. John's Fair.
Fireworks are rotten in London?
New London Sale Fest, sponsored from the casinos, Saturday night. Yeah, rumor has it, there's some really good french fries there, too. So...
We're going to have fireworks, too.
Yes, I was going to say Celebrate East Lime on the 16th. I think there's fries there, too. I'm not sure, but, yeah. Other than that, myself, everyone have a good summer. Enjoy. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.